Sorry, I didn't hear you. Which personal service would you like to reach? You can also say reception to be transferred to our receptionist.
Reception.
Did you mean reception?
Front desk.
Okay, transferring you to the reception. Good afternoon, it's Brody speaking, how can I help?
Hi, good afternoon Sally, I've been emailing someone called Maisy who works in your temporary accommodation department. Don't know which department that is, I think she works in Citizen Services.
Right.
Just wondering if you can put me through, I've been, I've applied to the council to try and get emergency accommodation and there's some people that were looking into, I think it was called a homeless list triage, so it's like a survey, I've got to fill in with somebody. They tried to phone me a couple of days ago, but I didn't get through to them, I've got a couple of emails, someone called Maisy, but I don't know, I think it's Citizen Services, I don't know what department it is, but it was to do with temporary accommodation.
Alright, let me put you through a hotline, please.
Alright, thanks Sally.
Hello, and thank you for calling Bristol City Council Homeless Prevention Team. This call is recorded and will only be used for training and quality purposes. By continuing with this call, you are consenting to us using your information in this way. More information can be found by searching for privacy statement on the council website. The Homeless Prevention Team is committed to providing early advice and assistance to prevent any person from being homeless. If you think you may be at risk of homelessness in the future, please tell the advisor that you speak to. Please choose from the following options. If you are homeless tonight, please press one. If your query relates to Home Choice Bristol, press two. If you wish to report someone sleeping rough, please contact Street Link via the city council's website. For anything else, please hold to speak to an advisor.
What's that? Matty's ringing his tunes, suppose it's just a coincidence that I'm on the phone. Fucking nothing. Say it again mate. I don't mate, it's a beautiful day, there's no reason not to keep playing music, it's just, he's just cranked it up exactly as I started. No, what, he doesn't know. Well yeah, it is, I'm just saying, it's annoying.
Good afternoon, or for the transition team, Bruce speaking, how can I help?
Hello.
Hello, how can I help you?
Hi, good afternoon, who's that?
My name's Lewis.
Hi Lewis, my name's Brody MacLeod, I've just been transferred through from your front desk. I sent an email through to apply for some temporary accommodation, because I've got nowhere to live at the moment. I've been, since all of this stuff kind of kicks off, I've been staying up with a relative in Bristol, but I haven't got really space for me to stay at his shared accommodation going forward, I've got nowhere else to live at the moment, I've just been served an eviction notice. So, I sent an email over, I've been waiting for a call, unfortunately, I think I was meant to get a call yesterday, like 10 o'clock, to do something called a street, it's called homelessness triage, but that didn't happen, so yeah. What do you do mate, am I speaking to the right person, what do you do for Bristol Council?
You're on duty, but I can, um...
What do you do for Bristol Council then?
We're essentially speaking to housing advisors, so we get people booked into triages and just give general advice. And so I'm the homeless person.
Okay, what, what do you do mate? What's your, what's your job title?
Customer Service Advisor.
Customer Service Advisor, remind me of your name again bro.
Lewis.
Lewis, okay mate, so if you've got a referral there Lewis, within your department, can you see my details, if I give you my name and my date of birth and stuff?
Are you looking at that Brody, what's your date of birth, bud?
My date of birth is 28th of June.
28th of June.
1986.
1986, I'll sort it out. Is it breaking with an I E?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, crawling, we've got you here bud, there'll be a tick, just load in the detail, bud. And you said obviously booked in for a triage as well, I'm just gonna double check and see what happened to that for you, there'll be a tick. Sort of look, Brody. When was it for Brody, when were you booked in bud?
Say that again bud.
When were we supposed to have that phone call to the triage, I'll quickly look up and see what happened.
Yeah, so it was yesterday at 10am.
Yesterday 10am, there'll be a tick.
Somebody was due, somebody was due to phone me, I sat around my phone for sort of like an hour, I didn't get a call back. We had exchanged a few emails, I don't know if you've got access to, have you got a group email server there? But yeah, I emailed through and spoke to somebody and they said they just need my sort of national insurance number, and it's just like an initial assessment phase and then hopefully they'll be, you know, be able to work towards a referral from there. But yeah, unfortunately no one phoned me man, but yeah, like I said, there's a few emails, I can't remember the lady's second name. I'm assuming it's the lady, she's called Maisy, I don't know if she's your boss or team leader, or, I got an email from someone called Maisy, and then also somebody else, but I can't remember actually. But yeah, there should be a few emails in the inbox there mate, if you've got access to it. And like I said, there was a phone call booked yesterday for 10am, but no one phoned me up.
Right, sorry about that Brody, that nobody gave you a call, I'm just gonna try and find out the reasons why that might be. Alright, apologies, the reason they didn't call is because they've actually, because look at the moment Brody, with the temporary accommodation, there's, because they've ran out towards the end of last week, they're trying to source new accommodation at the moment, so they've created a temporary accommodation list, so the moment we get some through, we can start booking people in. So they'd actually placed your name on that list. And, and it, the reason they didn't do the call was because we just noticed that you came and spoke to somebody in January, so they'd already initially done an assessment with you back in January by the looks of it, so they went off that basis for you. So apologies, they didn't call you there, should they just give you a call?
Give a little bit more information about that Lewis, so I did go down to Bristol Council, that's right, I went back, went down in January, I explained, at that time, I hadn't been served my notice, and I explained that I'd been in hospital for quite a few months last year. I got discharged in October and I've got a three-bedroom house which I claim housing benefits pay for the rent, but because it's got two extra bedrooms because of bereavement, I can't actually afford to keep it on. And, kind of, cut a long story short, part of the reason I went into hospital was to do with some of the things that affected my health relative to that, that property in that area. So like I didn't, I'd just been staying with relatives for a few months, but I'm in a situation where I've been kind of like, engaging with various different kind of housing providers to try and work out a way, because like I was in a bit of a catch-22 situation, because I don't get enough money to pay my rent every month, I've got to pay £125 every month to cover my property in Devon. But, I'm not allowed to get a housing exchange into a cheaper property, you know, into like a one-bedroom property, so a family could move into my house, because I've got rent arrears, but the reason I've got rent arrears is because the house is too big.
Well, so it's like a circle.
Yeah, it's a kind of a shitter, because there isn't really any way, it's a bit of a, a bit of a, a bit of a bad one, but when I explain that to the team at your office in Bristol,
Yeah.
down in Temple Mead, they basically said that, the bottom line is that because I'm, I've got, I still had an address and it was in Devon, it's like deferred to Devon County Council. And I said I'd been in Bristol, you know, I've been staying in hospitals in Bristol, using my ESA to pay for the rent, couldn't really afford to do that, and I've got a brother, I've got a family member that lives in Bristol, and he lives in a shared house and I've sort of stayed with him periodically, but it's not kind of like, you know, I can't really be doing that going forward. And obviously with all the stuff that's happened, I'm a little bit reluctant to sort of, you know, staying in a hospital just seems really irresponsible, like it's like, you know, you know, if there's anywhere that, you know, mixing with like, you know, 25, 30, 40 different people every day that you don't know on a changeable basis, probably the worst thing that we can be doing at the moment to try and, try and be sensible, so, um... So yeah, they, that, that, what they said in, whenever it was, what was the date mate, just remind me?
Uh, so you came in on the 21st of January.
The 21st, 21st of January, yeah, I mean, I don't know dude, but I definitely went down there, I spoke to somebody, and they basically said, you know, if you've, if you need to apply for housing, you've got to go to Devon County Council, because right here, you've got a postcode within dress right now, you know, which you don't feel able to go back to, or you don't, you know, you don't feel able to afford to live there, but obviously, you know, it's a kind of a bit of a flowchart situation, you know, if, if somebody doesn't feel able to go home, which basically, to be honest with you Lewis, I mean, it boils down to my mental health. I mean, I had quite a series of traumatic events that happened there and some quite
Yeah.
bad friction with some, some of the neighbours and it's just
Right.
had like a bit of a breakdown last summer and I spent a few months in hospital and kind of moved forward from that, but I, I kind of want to be, I've been, I've been in Bristol since, since I was discharged from hospital in October down in Devon. But yeah, that, that was, I mean, I appreciate, I'm glad that my name's been put on the list for referral, that's a good start. And I appreciate things are going to be really, really stretched at the moment, but if you could give me a bit more info mate, so you said my name's on the list, does that mean it's like, there is a referral happening, or are you saying it's been, it's on the list for referrals that have already been dealt with?
You're actually on the waiting list Brody, so with that, as I said, because they run out of places to put people at the moment, we've gone out to various businesses, private individuals, potentially there to see and borrow accommodation that currently stands. So waiting to see what comes back from that. Now, as we start to get the accommodation coming in, we will then start to call the people on the waiting list and start to get them booked into this accommodation. So it is a case of once we've got it, it will be offered to you.
How does it, how does it work, I mean, would you know what, I mean, obviously, I appreciate you've got policy and procedures to follow, but like, at the moment, what, what are you doing, so I guess you've probably had a bit of an influx with all of the stuff that's happened. Have you got, like, are you putting people into, into sort of hostels or B and Bs, or are you kind of overflowing to deal with the surge in demand? I mean, what, what, how are you dealing with it at the moment in terms of providing?
It's whatever we can get our hands on at the moment, so with it, we've completely filled up all the available hostels in and around Bristol.
Right.
And all the Airbnb, not the Airbnbs, the normal B and Bs. And we're trying to get private individuals have Airbnb's, see if they can offer accommodation to us.
That's what I was gonna say, I think, I don't know if there's going to be people at the moment who are willing to open up empty, you know, lets, to, to just kind of get people, you know, out, out of the kind of contagion zone. And I, I don't know if it would be, you know, even, I'm not sure, I mean, I appreciate you're going to be looking at probably overflowing into bedsits in Swindon for 44 people and shit like that every day, because it's like, there's no accommodation left around here. I'm just wondering what kind of constitutes, what sort of bookings you're looking at at the moment? And how, how it works, because if I could find, you know, somebody with a bedsit or something like that, that you could apply that budget to, you know, in an insulated way, so you would deal directly with them, kind of similar to housing benefit, I don't know if that would be any use to you, or if it'd help to speed up the situation, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I guess you want to be booking people into kind of group bookings, where like, you know, you obviously, you've got to be insured as a, as a local authority to be able to deal with.
Absolutely, yeah, but the way that it's gonna work as well is obviously if you did find somebody, we would need to make sure that we can essentially make, you know, that property as well and that then.
This is what I'm saying, it's not really like, you know, I guess if everyone started doing that, you know, they're gonna go and stay with John and he wants, you know, £50 a week for his bedsit, which is kind of gonna be a bit archaic, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I appreciate things are going to be stretched at the moment, if there's anything I can do to sort of help, you know, I don't know, you know, speed things up, or I don't know how the budget allocation works, but I don't, I mean, I haven't, I haven't got a clue of anywhere, like, at the moment, you know, literally I wouldn't have the first idea, but I'm just sort of.
No, that's understandable, best thing you can do Brody is if, you know, if anybody that could potentially offer accommodation, is to get them to make the inquiry over to us, so we can get the process started, try and get them on our suppliers list.
Have you got, have you got like a best point of contact, if there's anybody that I could?
Absolutely, yeah, let me, let me give you the email address for, for the team that saw out the let-ins, for the emergency accommodation during the pandemic at the moment.
Yeah, I've got it.
Is your paper handy bud?
Do you know what mate, I've just, I'm using my brother's phone right now and I've just installed a call recorder app which I use for all my phone calls, but I don't know if it's working, so I'm gonna get a paper.
What, nice.
Give him two seconds.
That's alright, just take your time, there's no rush.
Okay, go ahead mate.
Lovely, so it's COVID-19, there's no question in that, it's all just one word, COVID and then 19.
Is that correct, Lewis?
I don't know, it's all lowercase, all of this is lowercase bud.
Okay, cool.
And then full stop, and then accommodation, bristol.gov.uk.
Accommodation, so it's just covid accommodation, bristol.gov.co.uk?
Don't forget to put the 19 after COVID, it's 1919.
Right, you are, okay, um...
So if you know of anybody, but get them to email their details through to there, we can try and kickstart the process and get them on our suppliers list.
It's a bit of a long shot, I just thought, you know, maybe, because it's just like one of those types of like, you know...
Anything absolutely helps at the moment, if I'm honest.
Yeah.
The other thing I was gonna want to talk to you about Brody, is you obviously mentioned you had a bit of a bridge between rent that you were paying and what the housing benefits are for, and there was a bit of a gap, and you got through a research, did you apply for a discretionary housing payment at all?
Um, yeah, when I first succeeded the tenancy, it was my mother's property before, so she was a student, student nurse in a three-bedroom house, and she passed away, and when I first, I was on ESA actually when she passed away, and I've, I've been off work pretty much since, since about 2014. You get years, you get years' protection from the local authorities, you get 12 months, if you're under occupied by bereavement, the Housing Act gives you 12 months sort of recompense whereby you won't be penalized for your spare bedroom, bedroom tax as it's called. But after that sated, I did get a further award from Timberland Council, I think that was for like six months, or, I mean, you know, it's deemed to be only temporary, and I think I did, I did get a bit of relief for like six or 12 months, and I tried to apply for it again. But I mean, obviously their purse is, you know, they've got, they're on a finite budget, and at the end of the day, I'm a single man, you know, sort of 30, living in a house that really is built for a family, do you know what I mean, it's like you could, it's a three, three, three bedroom property, and, you know, I was hoping my housing association were going to rehouse me, they've got, they've got an obligation to make better use of the housing stock, you know, again, under the Housing Act, if you are under occupied, whether you're working or, or
Yeah.
uh, claiming from the authority, it's still, you know, really, they should have, they should have put me into another house, but they didn't do that, so I was just sort of left sat there, and it is my family home and I kind of kept it on, because I've got a brother that lives in Bristol and he's, this is his first sort of shared house away from home, where we both grew up in Devon. Anyway, don't, don't need to, don't need to name my life story, but yeah, 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 I did, I did man, I applied for DHP, unfortunately, I'm pretty sure, like, I took it through the necessary channels, I applied for it, and then I kind of appealed it and I spoke to a few people, but it never, it never, unfortunately they didn't do that, but you know, but I did, I did get a lot of help from them, which is really valuable. What I was kind of hoping is my housing association were gonna step in and say, yeah, you know, here's a two-bedroom flat somewhere else,
Yeah.
a bit more affordable, and, you know, it wouldn't have been a strain on the local council and somebody else could have, could have lived there, you know, instead of me rattling around on my own, but, yeah, unfortunately DHP, I don't think is gonna be an option to try and help that debt, but yeah, it would be great, great if it was, you know.
Yeah, no, completely fair, and I imagine the local council where you shoot from, they've got the same situation as us in terms of, do they have like a home choice where you would go on and bid for the properties?
Yeah, there was, there was kind of like an obligation that I had to make myself voluntarily homeless and lose my place on the social housing register,
Oh really?
because, well, I mean, that, that was, that was the implication, that they were saying basically, if we, if we don't rehouse you, you can choose to hand in your notice and go and apply, just like everybody else, but obviously as somebody who's succeeded a social housing tenancy and all of the kind of contraindications, pros, cons and benefits of that, I kind of wanted, I didn't want to be, you know, I wanted to keep, keep the tenancy, and it was also, there was kind of like a lot of emotional attachment with the house.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was, I was, I mean, I, I did speak with them, I think I spoke with, like, I've emailed them, I did contact them at some points to try and sort of go through, starting afresh. There's quite a lot of other things to do with some quite complex deceased fraud and quite a lot of money that unfortunately got, got pinched by somebody a few years ago, which is relative to some of the I's and the T's being dotted and crossed on the succession, relative to the relatives that passed away. Again, yeah, is the short answer, there is Devon Home Choice and you can do that, what I was hoping and what was kind of like, would be far better for everyone really, is if they put a, you know, if they transferred me, if the housing association did what they're supposed to do, and just, you know, put me into a property which was a suitable size for me, I put another family in that. But instead of doing that, what they've done is just sat on their arse while I have a house which is too big for me, that I can't afford, and unfortunately couldn't, couldn't let, because there were some problems with the electrics and a whole host, I mean, yeah.
Really, they couldn't get like an offer in there or something like that?
Would have been totally illegal, like, yeah, you don't really need to know any of this, but it was a very, house, house is very good quality, I mean, you know, housing association properties go, it's got solar panels and a front and back garden, they recently put some really good economical heating system throughout the property, which sounds great on, on paper. Unfortunately, there were some pretty serious errors that went down with
Oh god.
some of the electrical installations, like we were getting charged for the sun shining on our roof and guys that sort of made the, which sounds absurd, but it's just like an inconsistency with prepayment meters, and that kind of spider worked into a whole load of other local authority, environmental health issues and some quite serious stuff actually with the electrics, I mean, not only was one of the installations making us really poor, because rather than generating free electricity, it was the meter was just seeing all the electricity generated, electricity used, so we, as a, you know, my mum was a struggling single nurse, was impoverished a little bit, you know, a few, a few quid a month by that, and, and then the rest of the place was probably, I don't know, you can, you could say it was poorly maintained. I think it was, it was more like, as drastic as it sounds Lewis, it was more like, sort of malevolent, I mean, I mean, you, you, you could, you could go, you could call it manslaughter if you get bad builders, like, I don't know if you want to take it any further than that, but yeah, there were some very, very dangerous things which were installed at the property, which weren't really suitable for people like students or foreign exchange, kind of like, you know, Airbnb, Gumtree people that I wanted to let, let rooms to, like, it looked awful, and, you know, as soon as they scratched the surface, it was just, the paperwork behind it wasn't really, there was just no way. That was an option for me unfortunately, and my neighbours were complete sociopaths as well, who tried to murder me quite a few times, which is really unpleasant.
Oh god.
Yeah, they kidnapped a young woman and sexually assaulted her and kept, kept her in the property for, for months on end, and they did pretty horrible stuff to my little brother as well.
You can see why he wanted to get out of there.
Yeah, yeah, really, really repulsive human beings, to be honest bro, but I'm in Bristol now, where there's quite a lot more, has to be said, there's a demographic, demographic of unpleasant people here, but because there's just more people than there is in Devon, typically, 80 people out of 100 will be lovely, thought yourself, and, and it's, and it's really nice mate, but I don't, I mean, but yeah, that's the deal with the property, it's, it's not, I mean, ultimately, if you're looking at me as a housing applicant, and a vulnerable adult, I guess, with a history of hostage submission, you know, in, in a way, I have still got an address in Devon, I'm pretty sure, I haven't been served the notice officially, but my brother went down there a few weeks ago, and he said that there's a sticky, there's a bit of sticky tape on the door with a bit of paper on there, but as wild as it sounds, I've literally got a library of forged communications from, specifically from a housing association, like people that have phoned me up, I think it might have been my neighbours, have phoned me up impersonating them and have like had sort of written forgeries and it's quite dodgy stuff that went on with basically all of the, all of the stuff of the house, Lewis, so, you know, your energy performance certificate, like the safety certificate, who actually owned the property, and the electrical safety certificates, like, basically everything they could have done was, you know, I think they pretty much broke every rule in the book, and as they realised that they'd done that, they started to do some pretty questionable repairs as well, which was always a little bit sound, a little bit sinister, but basically, I'm a Devon County Council person, do you know what I mean, until I'm, until I'm evicted, like, I've, I've, I've been in Bristol for six months and I'm classing myself as no six to vote, and that's why I'm applying to Bristol Council, because I, you know, I'm, I'd feel more comfortable and solid, sort of, I used to live there about 10 years ago, and it's probably got me as a big fat council tax bill from, God knows how long, okay, like, I'm on the system somewhere, I used to live in Bristol for like about 10 years. But yeah, I mean, I'm, in theory, there could be a bit of a crossover, I'm just saying from your point of view, it's like, or whoever's dealing with the referral, because I'm from Devon sort of, but I don't have a house there anymore, which basically makes me a homeless man who's not from anywhere. But, uh, yeah. Do you think that's gonna affect it? I mean, like, as far as I'm aware, I've been served my notice, the thing I'm, I guess, maybe you'd know a bit more than me about, is whether the legislation at the moment is preventing evictions, have you, have you had that, is that what it's like?
You're absolutely wrong Brody, so at the moment it currently stands because of the lockdown, the government has put a suspension in place on all evictions for the next 90 days. And so anybody with a tenancy agreement at the moment can't currently be evicted and that's gonna last up until essentially the end of June.
Do you know, do you know by any chance when that was served, or when that was passed through Parliament?
That went through, let me find out, I've got email here somewhere.
I think it's evicted in a couple of days, I mean, all I've got at the moment is a Facebook Messenger message with a picture of a bit of paper on my door. And I haven't had an email or a phone call from my landlord, which is a bit surreptitious. I don't know, I mean, literally, but if, if it is legal, as long as it falls within, um...
Here we go, so from today, which is, which was at the time of the article, 26th of March 2020, landlords will have to give all renters at least three months if they wish to intend to issue a notice to seek possession, it's normally two. And this means the landlord can't apply to start a court proceeding until after this period. And this extended buffer period will apply in law until the 30th of September, sorry, 2020. And both the endpoint and three-month notice period can be extended if needs be due to lockdown. And section covers most tenants in private and social rent sectors in England, Wales, and all grounds of eviction for seeking to possess the tenancies in the Rent Act, the Housing Act, and the Housing Act.
So, the way I'm interpreting that is that basically it's, it's open-ended legally, like the jurisdiction and that's pretty, as in, like, you could be served your notice a year ago, do you mean, it's something that, obviously always normally, it'd be 28 days, but if someone's been served their notice, it doesn't make any difference that it has or hasn't been served, they're just saying the enforcement's gonna be delayed, so we're not gonna have court hearings, we're not gonna have
Absolutely, yeah.
If, if I have been served my notice, legally, mechanistically, what I'm saying is that that bit of legislation shouldn't have an impact, as in, it's not like, you know, notices to quit will be reassessed at a later date and perhaps overturned, they will be fixed and solid, they just won't be enforced for a period of three months to keep, to stop them.
Absolutely, yeah, they just can't then go for the possession order to enact that section 21 of the notice.
If I've been evicted, I am still effectively, I've no fixed abode, if I've been served the notice, it may not be, I haven't got, I haven't got to get my stuff out, they aren't gonna forcibly remove my possessions for another three months, but I am still evicted and therefore have no fixed abode, right? That's the way I'm interpreting that, so it's just saying, you know, if you are evicted, it's still valid, but they just won't enforce it for three months. But if you have been served your notice, obviously, you know, there's no reason why, you know, if somebody's throwing baked, baked beans all over the kitchen or whatever and someone's gone mental, like, it's not, you know, it's like, the landlord still has every right to evict that person regardless of whatever's gone on. And if these guys are serving my notice, like, I'm guessing that's still valid. Is, is there any way that you can verify, can you vet me as somebody with no fixed abode, or as a tenant, like, so we've got it on paper, or?
Is there any way, what, sorry?
Is there any way you can verify, like, who, so if somebody says they're a private tenant or they have no fixed abode or whatever, and they apply for housing, have you got like a database, have you got a way of verifying that, like, can you?
No, so what, what people...
Is this person a private tenant in England or Wales, do you know what I mean, can you, can you find out if I am categorically a, a private tenant or not?
Unfortunately, not knowing what they would do, is say for example, one of, you had a case, one of the housing advisors, what they would do to try and confirm the tenancy is they would, A, get the details of the landlord directly and try and call them, or secondly, the housing association or a council tenant, they would then phone the respective council to then go and check the details with them.
So you haven't got like a unified database, I mean, I'm just thinking from, you know, uh, obviously if somebody's like, somebody's like a 50 billionaire, they might phone up and try and, I don't, you know, it sounds absurd, but obviously if you can't tell if somebody is, if somebody is a private tenant, and that would be on the credit rating, or, I don't know, do you know what I mean, a property owner, and they come and apply for private, for temporary accommodation, they might not necessarily be valid, in the same way that when I went to Bristol Council and said I live in Devon, you know, they said, yeah, that's fine, you know, your postcode, that's nothing to do with us, we can't help you, do you know what I mean, it's not kind of a, but I'm surprised you haven't got any way of like finding out, like, there isn't, because, you know, you'd think it'd almost be the first port of call if someone phones up and says, can I have a free, a free bedsit off the council, they say, yep, okay, we've just got to make sure we haven't got one already first, do you know what I mean, like?
Absolutely, I know, I can understand where you're coming from, but no, there's, not, not what I'm aware of, there's no official database or anything like that, where they, they don't have the details.
Yeah, when you do your homelessness triage, do you like cross-reference that against any national databases, or like, will, will that find me in, like, find my electoral roll kind of details or as a person, you know, my, my credit?
No, no, so, so with it, what they would do is they'd obviously ask for a five-year address history,
Yeah.
and then they would do a trace on that, so for example, if they can find that landlord, once I've said it, if they find that landlord details, they would call them, if it's a current council, once again, they would call them and chase it up.
Okay, cool.
And they would do the manual run around with it.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right, well, I mean, I don't think there's really much more for us to discuss, other than, I mean, maybe looking at timescales, I mean, what, I understand it's like how long is a piece of string? If I can find somebody, like, it's probably never gonna happen, but if I, I don't know, if I do hear of somebody that's got like, property that you think you can, you, you, there's somebody you're seeing that can work, that'd be brilliant, but like, what's the kind of lead time at the moment? What's, what are you working for, if you're, if you're, if you're gonna be, if somebody applies at the moment, how long are they typically waiting until they get housed for emergency?
As, as, you know, I'm hedging off, that's a horrible phrase, and I really do hate it with the current climate, but it is, how long is a piece of string? I'm really, it's not for a race to say in this situation. But it, it just depends on how and when new accommodation comes into us and then accommodation gets freed up. So it's impossible to judge at the moment, Brody.
Okay, so I mean, like typically, I mean, I guess it's, it depends on when you've, what, where are you, where are you placing people at the moment? What kind of stuff are you, where are you?
And so the, the last bunch we placed into travel large room holiday inns.
Okay, where was that? Okay, where was that? In Bristol or?
Yeah, that was in Bristol. I think the most recent one was a Travelodge on Mitchell Lane.
Okay.
That was the most recent.
Okay. And like, how long are they looking to be there for? I mean, is this sort of like until, is this related to the crisis?
It, it's until the pandemic's over.
So it is like, it's not normal council procedure then to be housing that many people with a housing?
No, no, it's completely unheard of, Brody. It's, it's completely unheard of. And the government turned around about two, three weeks ago and said, there's a national initiative, we need to get everybody as much as we can off the street. Um, so while they're doing it through the homelessness legislation at the moment, they're doing all of the temporary accommodation bucketing through the Localism Act. Um, and with it, it's a case of they will stay in that accommodation until the pandemic's over.
Which could be like ages. I mean, I mean, I'm, obviously that's, that's brilliant, but I'm just kind of, I'm, it's pretty amazing really that they're doing that. I mean, it's like so many people. Um, but I guess it's better than, um, being, being at the hospital at the moment. So, yeah, sounds good. Um. Okay, so like, I'm staying with my brother at the moment and.
Yeah.
Um, uh, hopefully he, he won't get so pissed off with, um, me being on his side for every day that, uh, that he gets upset. I mean, what, what's, if I, I mean, like, I'm, I'm obviously gonna need to try and manage his, his expectations because he's, you know, I've just joined the council and he knew I'd, I'd emailed you guys and stuff. Like, what are we, how, how is the timescale sort of, I appreciate you just don't know. It's like basically just wait until we phone you up and if that's gonna, you know, if there's something available, we'll let you know. But to confirm that I am on like the waiting list to be referred.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And as I said, apologies if they didn't call you for the triage.
Have we, have we done the triage?
That's the reason I didn't phone you, yeah. Because they put you straight onto the, the waiting list.
Okay, fine. So you don't have to do that. I mean, that's just an optional fact finder. Is it to make life easier for the person doing the referral or is that you have to have the triage before you can be referred or?
Uh, normally, yeah. Normally they do the triage, um, because they try to assess the situation first. They do a bit of a fact find. So for example, you know, if it was a case of, I don't know, if somebody had a, a tenancy agreement, but for some reason they weren't living there, they'd obviously investigate that first before they would then like place them into accommodation. Um, but the fact that they had it on file that you were, you know, previously were asleep and they just knew instantly that they'd already done the triage and didn't have to investigate.
Wicked. Okay. So the referral's in place and I don't need to have any more communications until you guys get in touch?
Absolutely, bud. Yeah, you're on our waiting list and that's assured. We'll give you a call and get you booked in the moment that we've got something.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much for helping us. Um, if I, if I do hear anything, um, I'll give that email, um, a shot. But, um, yeah, thanks so much for taking some time. Speak to me.
Glad to.
Um, thanks for your help with that, bud. Have a good afternoon.
You as well, Brody. Take care of yourself. All right, bud.
Cool. All right. Thanks, mate. Bye-bye.
Take care.